And take attendance.
Becky Baisel.
Here.
Ryan Davis.
Here.
Lisa Hadine.
Here.
Scott Gergen.
Here.
Dave Pendle.
Here.
Stephanie Malm here and Kelsey Waits.
Here. Alright, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
I do. Can I, I'd like to offer that we potentially add policy five thirty at a minimum for discussion if not for a quick approval modification. It's the immunization requirements. At the tail end or after item four A, which is the seven ten.
Alright, so do we need a motion then to add that?
Yeah, someone would have to move in second.
The second.
So move.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor of adding discussion or possible action on policy five thirty. Say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Alright, motion carries. And so now at this point, we have a motion in a second for approval of the agenda containing this addition. So is there any more discussion? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Alright, motion carries. Alright. So first up is the first read through of the COVID nineteen face covering policy. And so we had briefly brought this up last week at the board meeting and then the following day, there was some new developments and so the policy committee met and to talk about the face covering policy.
Yeah, and I think I would just add that for the public that's watching, you know, we know that last week was a big week for mask coverings and was not just for Hastings but for many districts. There's been a lot of confusion around what what actually is, what needs to be done and all that. The policy that is in front of the board tonight, eight oh eight, the COVID nineteen face covering policy that Chair Waits referred to is actually based off of MSBA's model policy. It's also a policy that as written right now is a policy that multiple districts are using at this time. And so we are confident that that we're not on an island on this one and that it's been vetted by districts that have attorneys. Our attorney actually, I sent this version of this policy to our attorney, had him review it. And he concurred that this would be the most appropriate mask covering policy in current form to consider putting into place at this time.
So since this isn't for approval, we don't need a motion or anything like that, but do we have discussion on this?
So I read it, so help me understand how as I read it, it 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 read, at least to me, and maybe I misinterpreted it, but it read to me like if there is a staff member or a student that will not comply with the mask policy. Let me back up. If there's a staff member or student that cannot comply with the mask policy, we will ask them for documentation, right? Am I, am I correct so far?
Correct.
Okay. What happens if they choose not to provide that documentation?
Based on how the policy is currently written, as I understand it, that would be the, that would be deemed the same as refusing to comply with the policy itself.
Right. So am I, am I incorrect in saying that this is different than what we talked about last week?
Yes, it's different in the stance that what, what was clarified last week after our meeting, both by the Assistant Commissioner and the Commissioner of Education was that the Governor's Executive Order that states that all persons, students and staff and public will be wearing face coverings when in school buildings should be taken as rule of law. And so from that, those statements came policies like this. And so that's why, not different than us, many districts took MSBA's policy and went to their legal teams and said, okay, we want you to help us figure this out. I think Scott for that exact question. And that's where this policy is born out of is clarification for all of us, right? That indeed, it's not as gray as we thought it was. And that in fact, everyone is required to wear a mask, student or staff or public when they come into our buildings. And if not, there are, there are accommodations we will be willing to make to help through that process. However, in the end, face coverings at a minimum of some sort will be used based on what accommodations are needed. And it's not an option. And it won't be an option for us.
So to receive, as I read the policy, to receive an accommodation, you need to have a, a reason behind it. Correct, a documented reason behind it. So it's not just, I don't feel like fair, wearing a face mask, I'd rather wear a face shield.
That is correct.
That, okay, alright, okay. I just want to make sure I, I fully understand. So I'm kind of just putting it in layman's terms here.
Yes, I think the difference, well, I think the difference in clarity right now is that the the policy calls out specifically that there is a very, very small window of exceptions to the, to this policy. And they're either, they're either exceptions that are due to a diet or a documented medical condition or a behavior condition or a physical condition or anything noted on an IEP for a student or a five oh four. But in the end, I think in general terms, there is some sort of documentation or something you could notice by your own two eyes being a reason why someone couldn't physically wear a mask. Very obvious. That's the, that's the, where we're at.
Thank you. That, that clarifies my questions.
Alright, Lisa.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. I'm trying to read this on my phone, I'll do it. So in, in the exceptions, which is section four B one, the policy states, a student in grades kindergarten through eighth grade may wear a face shield when a face covering is problematic. I'd like to understand if the word problematic has a common definition. To make sure that that's uniformly practiced. And I have a couple of questions after that.
I don't have a great answer for problematic. I would ask Dave or Megan if they have any insight on that more than what I would. But I would be guessing if I tried to answer that.
I mean, my, my first crack at this would be that when you look at the executive order and even the Department of Health guidance where they state this, they also get into some, I would say, general language, like the very last statement, when they talk about students with behavioral needs or medical needs or developmental needs having trouble or not being able to tolerate face covering, they do say at the end of that too, like when face covering is otherwise problematic for the student, we're not going to make that an issue. I, I think they are purposely general with that because sometimes it's not maybe directly tied to a kid who might already be on IEP. It could be a basis of knowledge where it's a kid that we are working with that is in the child study phase that we suspect might have a disability. And so I think sometimes it's not as directly related to that disability as what's currently documented, but it might be problematic in the sense that it's posing a problem related to their disability in an area where we haven't yet identified that student as a student that has a disability. So that would be my guess where like they're trying to broadly cover to make sure we're not overly harassing or discriminating in a way that we are keeping kids from school or having access to school when they otherwise should be.
Okay, and I mean, I didn't ask that question because I thought somebody had a pocket definition of problematic. I can appreciate, I think, what the intent of the legislation or, or the guidance, which is I think where that language came from is. As we go forward, I think we have to be very careful. We again, as mostly the administration, at the sites that would, that there's consistency in practice. And that, and that across sites, students and staff are treated consistently, especially around that, that language again. So that's cool. And then my other question, and I'm going to broadly state it mostly because I don't have the correct terminology, I'm sure, is for students that are, that may be on IEPs or five oh fours or in other ways be engaged with their special services department. I'm concerned about two things. One, if our offered accommodation is online learning, is that a more restrictive learning environment? And that, and so, and if so, is that really a fair accommodation to the, to the student that might have that challenge? And then if we do have a student in the situation of maybe a behavior issue and our response is, if they can't comply with wearing a mask, they are sent home or they have to leave school property. If that happens frequently, does that start to look like a suspension? And maybe even worse, almost to an expulsion level. So I'd really like to hear some feedback. I want to make sure that we, that we're treating that special services population fairly. And maybe that could be a group that's most challenged by this policy.
Sure. Bob, you want me to start in on that or do you have some thoughts to start with?
No, go ahead.
I mean, I'll start with the second part first. I mean, if we are sending kids home for this, I, I don't think that we can ignore just basics in the People Fair Dismissal Act, where we only have a certain number of suspension days to work with still. So like we, we have to, we have to make sure we are being, you know, judicious with the way that we are, you know, using disciplinary measures like suspension to begin with when it comes to a child with a disability in general. So I, I think the same would apply here. I think if, once you get past ten days of suspension, you're changing a placement of a kid. And so the same would, I think the same would apply if you are kind of unilaterally applying a placement to online learning without the IEP team having a voice in that process. So like if we together as an IEP team think that online learning is the best place for a child to receive their education and their special education, we can go that route or if a parent's electing to go that route because we're doing that right now for, for students and making that work for them. But if we're as a school district saying you're going to have to go that route because you're having trouble wearing a face mask or a face covering, that's, that's a unilateral change of placement and that's going to be problematic in the end from a legal standpoint.
Okay, so I see Megan nodding her head and, which is good. I, you know, I like people that are dressed the same to hold the same professional opinions. Makes me feel better. So given that to be true, do, do you have any recommendations, Dave or Megan, to the language? Or is it, when it comes to operationalizing it, it's just a thing we, that the district staff need to be cognizant of?
Can I jump in?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think it is something that district staff need cognizant of, and I think it's going to need to be something that we have ongoing discussions and training for our staff as we go throughout the year. We are really working hard in special services. We've met with as many case managers who are able to attend meetings as we, this week, as we explain the changes that we need to make to students' plans to start out the year. And one of the parts of that discussion needs to be as bringing the team, the IEP team together to talk proactively about our students who may struggle with wearing a mask at all times due to a health need or behavioral need. So we are trying to, in those discussions, talk about what problematic could look like beyond just flat out refusing to wear a mask. Maybe a student has more impulsive behaviors and might throw the mask at somebody, but otherwise wear the mask. And really trying to talk through a lot of situations that could occur and making sure they're proactively having that conversation and parents can expect that to come up in these CLP meetings where we're talking about these contingency learning plans so that we can be proactive in adjusting what types of adaptations a student might need in order for the student to be able to tolerate the mask throughout the day. So maybe it's breaks outside at certain times throughout the day to take a break from the mask or instruction and different coping strategies and really trying to, we, we know where, where we're going to have students who might struggle with this and really trying to be proactive as much as possible, knowing that we do not want to be overly using discipline when we have students who are struggling with this as a result of their disability that may not be as visible as some other disabilities. But really communicating that to staff and have, I think it's going to be ongoing training and discussion and talking about different situations and talking through it.
I, I can piggyback. I think Megan makes a really good point. Their, their big focus of our discussion thus far has been like for, for those of you that, that might not know, if we're talking on the behavioral side of things, especially with students that have non-obvious disabilities to the, when it comes to like visually stand, from a visual standpoint, is that we have behavior plans in place from a positive behavior support plan standpoint. When it comes to non-face covering type situations, like we're trying, we're not expecting perfection. In a lot of cases, we're working on progress with those. And we're working on how do we build up some, some, some skilled bases in those areas or some tolerance to be able to establish better practices or better behavior in the end. The same thing's going to occur here. So if we have a student that's struggling with some tolerance, maybe that's a question for the OT to jump in to help with some of that, some of those pieces to help us with that. But we, we're still going to have some students, maybe from a health standpoint, that just can't tolerate some of those things because they can't breathe very well with those things on. And, and so they, they have to have maybe some accommodations made or some breaks built in like Megan said. And I, I think we just have to allow and know that we are, we are trying our best to, you know, mitigate and keep the, keep the safety concerns at the forefront while also allowing for access and, and students with disabilities to have, you know, a place here at the education table.
Okay, definitely. Thank you. That, I really feel quite a bit better about hearing your feedback and knowing that we're approaching that proactively. And then to acknowledge in this public setting that, that, you know, a consequence-based response or disciplinary response is not always the best fit. And for some students has additional consequences beyond just that, you know, disciplinary response. And so the more that we can be in front of that, the better. And I think it's important to have this conversation in kind of a public setting because it's not about, you know, a defiant fourteen-year-old who's just trying to be a defiant fourteen-year-old. It's, you know, there's some people and students and staff that are going to have, you know, real challenges complying. And we need to have some grace towards that. And I do appreciate that, you know, having an articulated policy. And I feel like this goes, is going in the right direction so that we don't have a shaming situation if a, if a student or staff member can't comply. And, and I think maybe people will feel more comfortable that, that, you know, steps to kind of confirm where people are at have been taken.
I think that's a very valid concern, and I think it's one not only at the district that we're aware of, but also at the state level and the national level is while mask and face coverings are used and going to be used to keep people safe, not only ourselves but others, that it, it unintentionally enters into our world another opportunity for discrimination to happen. And so we have to keep a balance with that because it could have impact and effects on, on people.
Okay, I don't have any further questions.
Alright, does anyone else have any questions or comments with the policy? Brian?
I just want to make sure I'm clear on something. So it was a while ago, but Scott alluded to, I believe it was Scott, alluded to kind of that, that piece of language in there that specifically speaks to problematic or however it was phrased. Is it fair to say, Dave, Megan, feel free to put it, that would you say that I feel like ninety-nine point eight percent of the time, if someone has an issue going on, we already know about it. I think what we're trying to guard against is all of a sudden this miraculous kid as a junior crops up out of nowhere that we had no idea and all of a sudden it just happens. And there's no medical or certified documentation of it. That, I think, is one of the faculty's biggest concerns is that all of a sudden these kids come out of the woodwork. I think we're very aware of the kids that have challenges and different things that your crew is working very diligently on and making sure that we're aware of those. And I'm sure you guys have already started thinking about how are we going to address all these. I'm very confident in that piece of it. I think that the importance of this centers around not so much that group. I'm not worried about them and I don't think that we have any intent. I'm glad Lisa mentioned it, but I'm sure there's no intent of discriminating against them in any way, shape or form, but making any accommodation we can for them. But the punitive piece comes from, to Lisa's point, the fourteen-year-old, just wants to be a fourteen-year-old. I just want to make sure that we're clear on that. It just, for me, it seems like the majority of the people, we should have some, at this point, unless they're new to the school district, we have some semblance of an understanding of who's out there and where some of the challenges may already lie.
I think sometimes, Brian, like just to, just to hit one more thing, I think you're correct that with, with some of the students we're working with, there are some obvious reasons why a student can't wear a mask and it's very easy for staff to understand. And I, and I think for most of the people involved in the school district, that is not going to be an issue. I concur. I think where, where I'm worried is again, and I'll just reiterate again, is that a lot of students don't have obvious disabilities. And then there aren't a lot of staff members that maybe even know that a student's on an IEP. So, so I, I will say like, and, and there might not be a right to know or a need to know, I would say in some cases either, until maybe this situation comes up. And so in that case, I think it's just going to be, you know, coming upon the case managers and the administration to pay attention to what we're doing and who we're working with to know if there is a disability-related reason there and to kind of tease that out with the team and the case manager before we're going down a disciplinary road. So that, that's all it is. It's just opening up the communication lines to make sure that we're not missing something where there's a disability at play and somebody might not know that because they just don't know.
One hundred percent, Dave. That's exactly where I'm going. That, those are things we're talking about case managers, we're talking documentable and all of those things. So that's perfect.
Okay, so any other questions about this one? Otherwise, we will do the second reading then at our next meeting and can approve it at our next meeting as well.
This is not a question, this is a, this is a, I spend too much time on Facebook comment. I have noticed a little bit of dialogue starting about parents purchasing face masks for their students saying, oh, I'm going to send my high school kids with this instead of a face mask. This is my plan. So the sooner, not necessarily the sooner that we can take a second reading, but you know, maybe this could get a block in the next Raider update that is since that this is the direction or some sort of summary at the very least be ready to put it out immediately upon second reading and approval. Just to give parents a little bit of time to overcome the, the shock value of what they thought they could do and what they will be allowed to do, just for clarity.
So maybe to that, if you wanted us to put something like that out in this week's Raider update, the only question I would have at this point, since the board has, I know we're not taking a vote on it, but if there, if there aren't any anticipated changes, unless something miraculous would come along, then we would, I would put this out and say, based on tonight's meeting, right, there doesn't, there's no anticipated changes to the policy. So unless something, you know, does significantly change, you can expect that this would be the mask or the face covering policy for the Hastings School District approval on the twenty-sixth.
I think if administration feels comfortable putting that out and saying we had a first reading and this is the direction, that's great. If we need to wait till I suppose it makes it the twenty-seventh, which is, feels like super long time from now. If the census, we should wait, I guess that's fine. We just need to be ready straight away.
I would say that the sooner we can get this out, the better off we're going to be.
Especially with the specifics about what is considered a face covering. I think to Lisa's point about families already going out and buying things so that they can see what is going to be considered appropriate and accepted. So I think that would be good information to have.
I also think that we need to make sure that we, along, right along with that, whether it's a video, what, however we do it, we need to make sure that both faculty and students alike understand what's considered the proper wearing of a face covering as well.
Yeah, that's actually a requirement that we have to do under the current guidance. So we were talking about that today with all of our building principles and how we're going to go about that, kind of train the trainer model with everybody.
Okay. Right, so is there any more discussion on this? Alright, then we will move it to a second reading for our meeting next week. Alright, so moving into action items, the first one is seven ten A, which is the transportation permission form. And we had done a lot of work on this just a couple of months ago, but now we're with some COVID restrictions noticing some limitations on what this does, so kind of making a quick adjustment there. So I don't know if Superintendent McDowell, did you want to go over it?
Sure, I can just help people understand. The only change to the form is going to be at the very bottom where we added a fourth authorization process. And if you remember and for the public, what this form is, is for our athletics, extracurricular. And it really denotes two different situations. One is when the school district provides transportation. The other is when the school district doesn't provide transportation. And it is a form where parents are able, guardians are able to give or not give permission for their students to get rides either from themselves, other family members or another student athlete. We're not looking at changing any of that, but we are looking at when the district is providing transportation. There, because of the social distancing that's now in place on our transportation buses or simply because we have families that may not feel comfortable with their students riding on a bus. What we're proposing in number four is that when the district is providing transportation, acknowledging that transportation is limited and or social distancing is in place by the Department of Health, the Department of Education, the Governor's Executive Order guidance. Under this circumstance, the alternative transportation may only be provided by a parent or guardian or authorized family member. So in other words, what we're saying is we're giving parents the freedom to drive their students or an approved family member to drive their sibling to and from athletic or extracurricular events because we otherwise don't allow that in a typical year when we provide transportation. And that's, that's the change.
Does that make sense?
I would be fine with that change.
I'm fine with the change in principle. I'm trying to pull the policy up on my second screen unsuccessfully. And that's, that's my problem. It's not the technology's problem. My question is if we, if an approved family member is the student. If the student, and I, and I think I'd have to go back and read maybe back on seven ten policy, not on the agenda, not on the slip, if a student could drive themselves to.
So that is why, that's why we put it under the alternative transportation. So alternative transportation is listed as a vehicle driven by own parent or guardian, a vehicle driven by an, another authorized family member, another participant's parent or guardian, driven by the student themselves or driven by another student athlete. So that's why we called it out that way is so it's only allowing those two options from the above list.
Okay, alright, so you found what I was looking for. So just for clarity's sake, then this modification to the, this recommended modification to the policy does not allow a student to drive themselves to an event or home from an event. I'm fine with that because this is already an exception to what, what we currently allow. But since a student driving themselves is, is separate in that list, I'm going to presume that they cannot be an approved family member to drive themselves.
I would say that is correct. They're only, and students are only allowed to drive themselves in this policy when the district is not
Right.
provided transportation.
Right. Yeah.
But the board, you have the, I mean, that, this is what we just, this was the request that was made was for family members to drive. So in this case, parents. So if you wanted to change the scope of that, you could, but it does not currently read to allow. So if you wanted to change the scope of that, you could, but it does not currently read to allow students to drive themselves.
Was the recommendation from the athletic director?
It was. Yep.
I'm comfortable supporting his request and I, should we see that the, that the need is different? I would anticipate a, an additional request. I, I'm fine restricting the number of students that are driving themselves places as long as we can accommodate getting, getting teams to events.
Yeah, that's an additional liability concern.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? I'm also comfortable with following the recommendation of Trent. So.
So then we just need a motion.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? Right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose him sign. All right. Motion carries. And then next up is policy five 30 immunizations. And so this was a last minute ad tonight.
Yes, I apologize for the last minute ad. That is not something that I want to become a habit at all, but this is not really a big change to the policy. However, what I wanted to make the board aware of is that the state is pushing back their deadline for us to turn in immunization data from October to February. And the reason for that is because immunizations haven't kept up. People haven't brought them in. We're anticipating a lag in getting all of them. And so I'm simply asking the board if, if you want to read it for tonight, or if you want to take action on it, not changing any verbiage in the policy, but simply voting to extend the, right now, the way the policy reads is that in three A, that no student may be enrolled or remain enrolled on a full time, part time or shared time basis in any elementary or secondary school within the school district until the student or the student's parent or guardian has submitted to the designated school district administrator, the required proof of immunization. Prior to the student's first date of attendance, the student or the student's parent or guardian shall provide the designated school administrator one of the following statements, which is either a statement proving immunization or a statement that says that there are man, the, the student is emancipated or for other reasons, they're not getting immunized. I'm just asking that the board take action to to postpone this one month from the start of the school year to give families an extra month to get their immunizations done because it's a stressful time right now, the way it is. And I'm, I guess I'm not sure that we want to be adding to that by saying you can't participate if you don't have your immunizations. So I'd open it up for board discussion. I'd ask for a motion to approve a change like that, but that's up to the board.
Can you, can you, um, re-articulate the dates? You said the state was changing their required date, which I mean, I presume we have to report, like there's a lag from when we report back.
Correct. Typically as a district, we're required to report to the, to the Minnesota Department of Education that the number of, the percentage of students that we have who have completed immunization or who have otherwise aren't being immunized and have submitted that documentation. They've moved that back to February.
And that's, so that's not a student specific report. It's a district wide cumulative report.
Correct. Yep. It's a tracking report.
Okay. I'll see if there's other discussion. I would, I would maybe consider making the recommendation going to the first of November then. If our, if our due date to the state isn't until February.
Dave?
I guess I, November 1st is probably fine. I'm just thinking that, you know, I agree. After going to the clinic today to get my pre-op done, you know, they're really overwhelmed over there in the numbers of people coming and the services able to be provided. So I'm thinking that if the state is requesting, you know, I'm fine with going back to the first of November or somewhere in that area and say that would be satisfactory for this school year.
Right. Any other thoughts on this? All right. So then what date would we look at? November 1st? Is there a motion to extend our due date to November 1st?
Some of.
Second.
Is there any more discussion? Nope. You're on mute, Lisa.
I see that. I'm just looking at dates on my calendar. Maybe we should make it the second because the first is a Sunday.
Agreed.
All right. So with that, Stephanie, do you feel comfortable changing your motion?
Uh, yep. So do I, do I need to restate it that yes, November 2nd, I moved to have it. The immunizations extended to, to yeah, that no Monday, November 2nd.
And I'll follow up with that second.
All right. Are there any other questions or discussion on this? Okay. All those in favor of postponing our reporting date to November 1st?
Second.
Second?
Second.
November 2nd?
November 2nd. Aye.
Thank you. I was like, why are you holding up a two? All those opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carries. So with that, that's all we have on our agenda tonight. So we do have our regular board meeting next week. And we'll see you there. Okay. All right. Thanks for hopping on. Have a good night at work, Becky.
Have a good night.
Bye.
All right.